We are calling to order and standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Bill is going to walk. Perfect. Okay, first item is public comment. No? Okay. We're good. All right, that we will move right along, seeing that there is no one else here for public comment. We will move to approval of the February sixth. Regular meeting minutes, may I have a motion to approve?
I have a question about the minutes.
Well, let's motion and second, and then we can discuss.
Okay.
So who wants to motion first?
Either one. I'll go first. I move approval.
Okay. And you'll second?
And then we'll have.
And then we can have discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
A second.
All right, so now we can have discussion. Any comments, questions, or concerns about the minutes?
I was, and this is something that might be under other business. I was wonder, I thought that the number item ten was going to remain under the agenda, the the possible discussion and possible action of creation of an ad hoc committee. I, in my notes, it just said that, that someone was going to look into who was on the.
Yes, which I am, which I, which I, you know, doing, and I pulled it off so that I can finalize and reach out to some of the former committee members to find out if they're still interested in being on it. And then, well, I also pulled it because I want to see, we have our, our RFP is out, and we have them coming back next Monday. So once we get that in and kind of see where, what direction we're going with that, then it kind of helps me as to what direction the group is going to have to go in.
Okay. Now, the only reason I ask is because my notes said that some, I think you were going to look at the previous members and report to us this month. It was on my list.
They, um, the group has been inactive since before 2018. So that's why I have to kind of see who's still around, who is still interested. And then I want to wait till we get our RFPs in and see where that direction takes us. And then we can kind of go from there. Because depending on what happens with the RFP, kind of sets the direction that the group may have to go in as far as education wise with the public. Okay? Because it will be a learning curve for one and all.
Yeah.
So it has not been forgotten. It's just that we, I want to get the ducks in a row before we move forward with it.
So do you think we can ask, you'll talk about it again?
We'll do, we'll do it again, because we will have closed, we will have, the RFPs will be in, you know, and the company that's appropriate for the job will, you know, be decided, and then we can go from there.
Okay. So you do have in your possession the list of previous members?
I don't have it with me yet. Yeah, it's, yeah, okay, yeah. I have it with my solid waste stock. So, yeah, so any other discussions or comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval? Say hi. Hi. That's unanimous. There are some tax refunds. I do have the list here for your review. It's basically all excess payments. If we can check that the bill proves, then we can. Oh, I don't think, I'm good. Leslie doesn't need one, so that's for you. So as you can see, they are all excess payments in a total of five thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. So may I have a motion to approve? You can review them and then have a motion to approve them.
Can I just ask, so these are all people who paid more than they should have?
Right. And a lot of times it may be through their escrow accounts because they're putting more into that than the actual bill comes out. So, um, yeah.
And yeah, there's one that says escrow payment. That's the large number.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of times if, if you've got a car and you sell it mid-year, they prorate the taxes.
So it's, uh, they're all excess payments. That's probably not a con, that one.
Yeah, well, over in Reason for Refund actually says escrow payment, so. Uh, that must have been. Yeah, that almost happened to us when we refinanced.
Or sell a property.
It was right around when it was due, and we thought we were going to have to pay one bank's escrow and then the others, and then eventually get it refunded, but.
Yeah. So. So they're, they're money back. So, um, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, approval of the tax refunds, all in favor?
Aye. Thanks for the, the report, so I can see the names and make sure.
Yeah, I think the only column that was added was the reason, because everything else was, was on the previous, uh, it just went from portrait to landscape.
Point of order. Sure. No one moved the approval of them.
Oh, I thought, I thought we did.
You did. My apologies.
I moved to, to.
Okay.
The refund.
Flash the clerk. Did we get ahead of ourselves?
Okay.
I will be happy to second.
Okay, now, all in favor? Five, okay, fantastic. Um, okay, there are no cemetery deeds for this, this month. Russell, we are still waiting. On item number five, number six, we are still waiting for any final notice on that. Simpson, we are close. We are so much closer every day. So one of these days I'm going to say it's done, but right now we are still status quo. And nothing is, is happening right now. Uh, number eight, we have put in, um, a request to, um, planning and zoning for a review of those paper roads, Rolling Green and Glenwood Court. I actually have, John Paul Garcia is doing a survey of Miller Road, the end of Miller Road, to verify the lines and where everything is, because that could be a potential also discontinuance that we can bring forward.
Oh, we need to get up by the.
We'd have to have, we'll have planning and zoning review that one as well, but right now I need the survey with the specifics as to the, the layout, because it is kind of a, I don't want to say cul-de-sac, but it stops at dirt, so.
Usually have to turn around in that driveway.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if there'd have to be any kind of, I don't know if this is a vain question, any kind of easement on either the water company property or whatever to make it a kind of cul-de-sac or, or so the bus doesn't have to turn in somebody's driveway, but can actually make a sufficient go around to, to turn it. Um, powerful work.
Well, man, first look, woman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm thinking what we could probably do is have Mr. Garcia, as he's doing his survey, uh, sketch out an appropriate, what an appropriate cul-de-sac would be, and then there could be discussion by this body, uh, because that would probably require, you know, taking of some private property to get the cul-de-sac, because it wasn't put in at the time that area was developed, but those neighbors might want a cul-de-sac, because it would make their lives easier probably in some instances. So just for purposes of the conversation, uh, maybe that's something you might want to ask him to look at, and then you can then advance the conversation.
Okay. Thank you for the follow-up on that. Okay, perfect. So basically, that's where we are right now. Planning and zoning will be reviewing those, and then they will send a recommendation back to us, and then we move forward from that point. Um, item number nine, we have a resident who has a point nine, a point nine acre property on Old Litchfield Turnpike, who, uh, she lives in Arizona right now and would like to gift the property to the town. So I basically have two motions I would like to sort of put in play here, um, so that we can move this process along for this body. Uh, the first would be to refer um, to planning and zoning uh, this item for review, another eight twenty-four review on this parcel. And then it would also be another motion to refer it to Board of Finance, since they have a, a meeting next week, to confirm that it would not have any monetary appropriate, annual monetary appropriation to the taxpayers. Um, I mean, this property has been sitting pretty much vacant, and the property owner has done nothing with it, and I'm guessing that it would pretty much stay status quo.
Yeah, just to confirm that the.
She's giving it to the town.
No cost or de minimis. It's not like the other piece with the head to terra building down.
Right. No, this is basically a little piece of property. It's actually surrounded by residences. Um, so there's really nothing else you can do with this property. So.
And, and matter of first look, woman? Just, just so the, the record reflects, the reasoning for the referrals for the Board of Finance is to just verify who has the authority, whether it's the selectmen or whether it has to go to town meeting. The eight dash twenty-four, you'd have to do, because statute requires it, but your ordinance uh, does give the power to the town meeting if there's an annual appropriation that would be required. But this being a small parcel, it's, we're not going to be, it's doubtful that there'll be an annual expense. It'll be added to the town's insurance, it'll be, uh, Public Works may have to do some work there, but it's probably not going to increase the budget to a degree that's going to require an annual appropriation, but the Board of Finance will have to determine that.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I, I have the motions here. I don't know if, if Gina, you want to read them, and then Bob can read them in seconds. I just thought it was easier to have something in writing, and then Lauren can put them accurately into the minutes, so.
Do you, do you have an address? I was just curious.
Uh, eight, eight twenty-nine Old Litchfield, well, Litchfield Turnpike, but I. Yeah. It's, it's right, if you were coming, if you came down Mumsen Road, took a left, you went by Anne Drive, you know, where Anne Drive is, it's just down a little bit on the left.
On the left.
On the left. Yeah. You know where Frank RICO lives, right next door to, it's right next door to Frank RICO, if you know Frank RICO.
Is there, uh, is there a house?
There's nothing there. It's just wooded. It's just.
Yeah, I think that's what you said before.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing on it. It's just been a vacant. It's only point nine, it's really, and I think there's wetlands that might be in it, so there's really nothing you can do with this property. So, um, they want to.
I, I know this question might be premature, but I was wondering, um, is this, even though it's not a huge piece of land, is this something, I mean, what, what do you envision doing with the land? Would you?
Nothing. There's nothing you can do with the land.
Would this be something that would be included in the land that's considered?
Just found property. I mean, we have other properties in town. It's just open space, yeah. I mean, you can't really put trails on it because it's surrounded by residences and private property, so it's just sort of there. Small, yeah, it's less than an acre. It's just kind of sitting there.
Unless, unless, unless it wasn't all wet and the neighbors wanted to buy it, but they probably wouldn't pay much for half of it or something.
So it's just sort of there. So, um, Bob, if you want to hear her, Gina, read them, and then if you.
Sure. Do you want to hear this, Bob?
Yep.
Let me just take a quick.
Sure. Does it make sense?
It does make sense.
Okay. You know, sometimes when you type something and you retype it, you retype it.
I mean, I don't think I have to read all this stuff.
About the general statutes or whatever?
No, the, the map block, the lot.
Well, you probably should, so we have it on the record, but, but I can give it to, to Lauren after, including.
Right. So, so this is the motion. It's a motion to refer to the Town P and Z Commission in accordance with section eight dash twenty-four subsection two of the Connecticut General Statutes of Connecticut, the acceptance of a gift of real property known as um, eight twenty-nine Litchfield Turnpike, Bethany, Connecticut. And the map block is lot one sixteen dash forty-five from Christine Boucher in accordance with chapter forty-one, paragraph forty-one dash one A of the Bethany Town Code. That's my motion.
I understood it, so I will second your motion.
Okay. Any other questions are coming? Well, here, none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we will refer that to P and Z for their review, and then they will recommend back to us, and if you want.
Let me read the second. Got it there. I got an extra, extra sentence, extra line. All right, here's the motion. To refer the acceptance of a gift of real property known as eight twenty-nine Litchfield Turnpike, Bethany, Connecticut, map block lot one sixteen slash forty-five from Christine, Christine Boucher to the Board of Finance for determination of whether the acceptance of this gift of real property would require an annual appropriation of town funds raised by taxes to preserve and maintain the corpus of a gift of real property, and send reported the same back to the Board of Selectmen in accordance with chapter forty-one, section forty-one dash one, sub, uh, subsection three, subsection A.
That's his motion.
Oh, I.
You want the subsections again?
I did have to say mat lot, lot, right, in the thing?
I hope so.
One sixteen.
I was just, yeah, I was just checking the name, one sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
So, so yes.
You're second?
I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. Uh, any other comments or questions? Because then they will refer back to the Board of Selectmen. Sharon, I think, has a question. I see her hand kind of waving.
Yeah, waving like I'm like, I guess it can probably wait to finance, but what is on the property?
Nothing.
Well, is it something we're going, I have to mow?
No, it's all, it's just wooded, nothing.
It's something we can just leave.
It's left, it is nothing we have to maintain in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, my, my guess is they're worried about somebody giving, say, a park, and you're going to have to maintain there, so even a building is going to have to cost.
Yeah, no.
I don't know if they're saying, like, well, somebody might throw, um, some trash, and that's going to cost a fraction of a cent for the town guy to pick it up, so.
They pick up all the dirt around town, so it's not, yeah.
We mow a lot of things.
No, this would not require mowing, because it's basically just a, I don't want to say an abandoned lot, it's just a vacant lot that has no use. And she wants to give it to the town. So, any other comments? Um, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. We will move that along. Um, number ten is the, to act on the Historical Society's request. And I included that in your packet so that you could see, oh, Linda, your timing is impeccable. We're on your item. I typed, I typed up basically the summary of Will had sent me an email, and I tried to consolidate a little bit too, so it could be easier to, to read. Um, and I included the quote they had, and they said they would go and get a couple of other quotes for the job, you know. Um, but right now, they, they wanted to give us something to start with, to show us what the, um, obviously, it's not going to be more than that. They will go with the, the best quote for that job. So it's really not asking for more money. It's basically just reclassifying the use of the money. So. That's, they just need approval on that, so we know they can go forward. And they are being like the problem we had when I first took office. We found out the septic system is under the parking lot out here. So fortunately, we found out there was an issue with it prior to them, like, and I mean hours prior to them paving, so we don't, they don't have to go and dig it back up again.
Well, I mentioned to you that, um, the, the, I'm not going to vote on this. I'm, I'm standing because I'm on the.
Right. So I will make the motion to approve the request, like I said, as it's not requiring additional funding, it's just kind of out of favor. Um, so I'm going to motion. Gina, would you like this?
I'd like to.
Okay. Um, basically, you and I are voting on this because he's recusing himself, so I, I'm in favor of it, um, and, and, okay, so. We've got that down, so that's perfect. Um, the, uh, I'm sorry.
Question?
Sure.
I, I don't really remember, so I'd appreciate if you refresh my memory, if somebody does.
Sure.
Was this from ARPA funds?
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay, and finance is going to have to, to.
Approve as well.
Uh, approve, yes, because with ARPA individual projects, we have to make sure.
We'll put this, we'll put this on the Board of Finance agenda, as well.
Yeah, the dollar amount isn't an issue. It's just that we have to keep the ARPA.
Yeah. I will, I will make sure it gets put on the, um, Board of Finance agenda as well.
The request is for both of us to approve the reassignment of the money.
All right, I didn't hear.
So.
I don't think that was in the motion.
No, the motion is just for us to.
It's fine.
Um, approve it here, and then we're going to put it on for your approval, so that both bodies are approving it. So, um, we had the motion, and we voted right, we're good. Backtrack a little bit. Okay. Um, the Town Committee, Town Code Review Committee. Um, I reached out to some individuals, and they have, uh, we met, and they confirmed their interest in, uh, because of change of our voting from May to November, and, um, things just need to be updated. A lot of things in there have not been updated in a while. So, um, I will tell you, uh, to approve this committee, I will tell you who's on it. Um, it is myself, Will Brenton, the town clerk, because he's an expert in the town code, and Ben as legal counsel, uh, Rob White, Andy Gaw, Brad Bookta, Ruth Beardsley, David Babitz, Helen Blatchley, and Angela Mordecai. I tried to make sure it was sort of across the board, so we had a, we would be able to bring back a, I don't want to put a political spin on it, but a bipartisan agreement, um, with the revisions have to be.
Man, first look, woman?
Yes.
I, I just want to just clarify the record. I believe I'm there to give guidance and counsel, but I'm not actually part of the committee.
Correct. I, I said you were there, legal counsel, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, so can I just have a motion, because, so we have it on the record?
Can we just, we keep.
From who's down? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Brad, Ruth, David Babitz, Helen Blatchley, and Angela Mordecai. They are, just so you know, two Republicans, two Dems. So it's sort of across the, the board.
And have they, they, all these people have agreed to.
They all have agreed to, to be on it, and I'm hoping that we are, um, going to be able to review it in a, um, a good timeline, so that we can bring any revisions and whatever to the May town meeting, so that we don't have to have a special meeting, um, to, to make any of these changes and corrections and revisions and updates and whatever you want to call them. And so, um.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to, I know, I don't know, like fifteen years ago, there's a, there was an ordinance review, and I think maybe a few of the things got done. Most of them weren't. But one chapter we just didn't touch was the solid waste and recycling, and it was really outdated even then. It was, uh, it was still, before the town did pick up, it was still trying to control where the private contractors went. It was the flow control, so it's way out of.
That one may have to be all by itself, because that is going to require extensive conversation, because I think once we know what we're actually doing with our new contract.
She may want to do the same thing and say, we know this is a mess, and we're just not going to.
Yeah, no, we're not touching that one, because we know it's going to require, um, a lot of this other stuff is more administrative, clerical, um, you know, anything that refers to.
For the May, yeah.
Now has to be November.
Yeah.
You know, anything that refers to, uh, terms starting on July first now, would say the first Saturday in December, because we passed the ordinance last year for, for that correction. So if, if, like I say, a lot of it's just cleanup, but, um, then we're going to, you know, just look and see if there's other issues we have that putting an ordinance in place would be, would be helpful.
Sorry.
Us, somebody's not muted? Okay, we're good. Um, so can I just have a motion to, so we have it on record? Uh, it's going to be called the Town Code Review Committee, just to give it a, a title. I thought that was pretty accurate. Pretty succinct and to the point, so, uh, may I have motion?
To, um.
To just approve that this group is going to do the, the review of the town code.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
And they're going to report back to us, or?
We will, yeah. We will, as we move things along, we.
And it's, and it's ad hoc, right? When they're done.
When they're done.
They die.
They're done. Well, let's say they don't die.
Well.
We, we, we.
The committee, the committee, the committee expires, not necessarily.
Position, so they're good. Um, okay, any other questions or comments? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Great. Leslie, you want to give us any updates on grants?
Um, the steep grant, we have contract with the architect and the contract that the state signed. So we are able to move forward, um, with bids for getting the work done on the new steep grant project. Um, the gym is underway. Um, the windows are complete as far as Cabrera is concerned. The DeLoro grant that is moving forward, we are just doing that on a project by project, um, RFP at the moment. Um, but we may be contracting through an outside grant writing company to oversee the entire project to make it easier because of federal compliance on paperwork. That way, all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted, and we will, our concern is having to repay a dime of this money, and if we bring someone in that has expertise in handling grants of this size, we will not have to worry about that. So.
You know who you're thinking.
We would, we would probably be using Gordian.
Okay, and they do grant stuff too?
Yes. Yes, they do project management.
Okay.
Yes.
It'll help streamline the whole process.
Yeah, because there's, I mean, I'm sure you, you know, the paperwork involved with making sure all the pay, certified payroll, and you're getting your, it, we just, we don't want, we don't want to make a misstep on the funding with it. That's why we're looking for a professional grant management oversight on this. And that's all I got.
Can you, um, the, the steep, uh, contracts are signed, and you said that we can move forward. What was the move forward to, to doing what?
Uh, we can, we can, we can, we can write up RFPs to actually contract to do the work.
And what's the work?
The work is to do some repaving at Public Works and put in and a second floor or a
resting.
Or I believe it's going to still be a second floor as opposed to an expanded first floor on Public Works.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I think you mentioned it at one point.
That's fine.
And the trip grant, we, you know, um, we can try to get the road reclassified and apply for a different grant called a lot zip. Uh, but I have to follow up with Council of Governments in North Haven on that to see exactly what criteria, you know, do we qualify to actually reclassify it. Otherwise, we will, we can potentially reapply for the trip grant again, because they, I've been told they're going to do a second round. Um, but of course, timing is everything, and we don't know.
And if any, you said you were going to have some kind of a meeting with DOT, did you get any, um?
We haven't had that, to be pretty fair, no.
Well, I mean, like, if you could get the thing, maybe they wouldn't even put it in writing, but like,
Yeah.
You know, like, you, you know, if, if they say to you, you could apply again, like, you're not going to get it probably, or it's like, you're so stark, so stark, yeah, I know.
Yeah, they, they told, they had us so pumped up that we were going to get it the first go-round, and that, yeah.
They found some other use of the money, because they thought I had to go for.
Well, everything, almost everything had to do with bike paths, um.
A lot of, a lot of, there was almost ten million dollars awarded by the state, and ninety percent of it went for sidewalk projects.
And bike paths and anything that was.
So they, that's what they prioritize.
That's what they prioritize, because.
If in your meeting they said that's what we're going to probably do next time, then.
But they talked so much about safety, and we thought, this is perfect. Our project was perfect, because they were, you know, kind of pressing on this, this safety piece, but I guess.
We could throw a sidewalk on one side.
Or a bike path or something.
So they haven't really given us a clear rationale for why we didn't get.
We haven't had the debriefing yet, but I, I made a note. I'm going to reach out to them again to see if we can, um, to know what.
Because, you know, to Bob's point, I think if they say we're focusing on walking paths, then why?
Going a different direction.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, I'd like to hear about what the rationale is for.
Why, why we didn't get it, yeah.
Well, at the cost meeting, um, the deputy commissioner. Well, at the cost meeting, the deputy commissioner for DOT made it very clear. That DOT's priorities are safe multi-use of roads. They want, they, they're all about sharing the road, narrowing the driving lanes to allow for walking and biking paths.
Well, we have to widen them be so first and then.
It is so, that's what their focus is at the moment. And I believe that's, I, 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 we don't know, because we haven't had the debrief. But our gut is telling us that had a lot to do with why. It was declined for us, because it does not include bike or walking paths with it, it's just widening the road.
Safer. That's our priority, to make it safer, but, so we will, we will find out and. They, they know I was not a happy camper when we didn't get it, so the thought process hopefully will be a little different if we do a go, a second go around. But, so that's where we are with that and we're up to other, any other business before the board, oh.
Yeah, I, I'd like to update the Board of Selectmen on what finance is doing. Because it's not here and it's going, you're going to need to know before your next meeting. We anticipate finishing having a budget by next week. We are anticipating a budget hearing on April fourth, which is a Thursday and that's gonna be at the school, right?
Correct, actually, and the town meeting will be up there as well.
This one?
Leslie's. Group, small group, mostly Wesley, to vary, but all the department heads have worked really, really hard to try to. Keep everything. In, not, well, I don't know what to say, I had a lot of issues with increased costs. Due to inflation and, and contracts, but. It's looking really good for a mill rate, we don't anticipate. For example, that we're going to exceed the motor vehicle cap, we expect to be a bit below.
What, have you taken like the average house and said what happens to that? Well, I mean, you need, you need something to compare to.
No, but we haven't done that, because part of, part of what's happened to the grand list is that there are new properties on it. And part of it is, you win some, you lose some in terms of your market value, so no.
Yeah, I just heard today that, I was surprised because Orange had a similar. At least before the appeals and everything, thirty-three percent or something increase in grand list. But I guess it was more of a shift from commercial, so I was, I guess their Board of Finance is. Very worried if, if their budget didn't go up at all, they just spent no more money than last year, every, the resident, the average resident. I think was going up a couple hundred dollars.
What are you talking about?
What, saying that, the. So it's like you would think like, oh, the mill, you know.
Yes, but what is their mill rate?
It was thirty-two, something.
Those twenty-two?
No, thirty-two, but it's, it's gonna be in the twenties after the.
Oh, they, they did a rebuild too?
Yes. But I'm saying, in their case, so much shifted from commercial to residential. You, you, you're gonna have an absolute. All, all homeowners will be paying more, most homeowners will pay, paying more, even before you raise. Pay anybody any more money or anything like that, so I, I was kinda surprised, I thought, oh, this will be easy. I guess we didn't have that kind of a, a shift.
We unfortunately are not in a position to have that kind of a shift. Uh, we don't have that much commercial.
Do you think, or you're not sure yet, you think we'll be under thirty? That's too bad, that's a.
But, but we're, we're hoping not to be. Well, I dare say, a number that.
We, we can guar, we can guarantee that the mill rate will be under the motor vehicle cap. We can guarantee that right now.
Probably less than that.
We've got, we've got some issues going on, there's a, there's the question about the reimbursement of. Of the motor vehicle tax from the state, you know, where they were reimbursing us.
The difference.
You're not gonna get it if you.
Well, it's four hundred thousand dollars and it would be nice if they gave it to us. But we don't think, we, we don't wanna count on that, because we are positive, we won't be eligible for it. But it's from last year, it's supposed to be.
It's a, it's, it's a one-year lag on the grant revenue.
They shouldn't take it away if it was due last year.
Things that go through OPM, who knows? Things get interesting, the problem is we won't know until after the budget, so that's the kind of thing at the budget hearing. That I personally would like to hear from the taxpayer is, would you like us to be conservative, which means don't count the four hundred thousand? Or would you like us to subtract out the. Count the four hundred thousand as revenue and by then we'll know exactly what the impact would be on the mill rate and.
And the state can't give you an answer in the next month?
Answer, the answer I received today was that, yes, we are entitled to the money. But that doesn't mean we will receive the money.
In June, right after budget season ends.
Yes, yes, that, yeah, that's, that's part of the course with, yeah.
So you'll have to make a.
So we'll have to figure out.
Get a gamble or guess on.
Yes, we'll have to make a decision and another thing that we're. We're looking at, well, first of all, a, a big hit is that we have to do Roundhill Road. Because we no longer have that trip grant coming in.
Well, we're looking at other sources of revenue.
Well, well, but we don't know if and when we'll get it, so.
We have to deal with it.
Yeah, it has to, it has to get done, so.
Already been delayed two years, waiting for grants, so.
So we have put the expense of doing Roundhill into the budget.
Capital budget, so that's, but if we get the money for the motor vehicle tax reimbursement. That almost pays for Roundhill Road. It's, it's. It's a juggling act and what we're hoping to do is use some of the capital reserve, we're not sure. We're not there yet, next week we hope to be there and also to try to fund. And, and not a huge amount, but an amount into capital reserve going forward every year. So that we don't have big things come out and, and by this. I don't know why it is, but it, an awful lot of trucks come from. Out of nowhere, we need a new truck every year or two. I know, they've, well, at this point, though, the good news is that all of the, nearly all of the deferred maintenance issues. Have been addressed, so now it's a question of keeping up.
Keeping up with things and not letting them.
Right, yeah, so. There will be, it'll be, hopefully, an interesting and productive discussion at the budget hearing. But things are looking pretty good, I think, we're looking, we're below, oh. Where are we, what are we looking at right now, I forgot what the number is, and I know you told me, the percentage.
The overall budget increase is around four point three percent.
Which is less than the school.
Yes, cause the elementary school is five point four four and.
Amity is not, Amity has not yet.
But next week, do they sort of approve it to go?
Oh, well, I don't know, the Amity Finance Committee has, has approved an amount, the, the, well. Very strange, well, there was a discussion from all the members of the Board of Education and. They had the same problem we did, we had not had any opportunity to discuss it before we were expected to act on it and. And some of them, I think, are of the opinion that some things should be expanded and some things. Think some things should be cut and some things, something, that everything is fine, that they should do what the finance committee. Recommended, so that was at. Three eight six increase, but we're, we have the interesting situation that. Because of this thing about we don't ever give back surpluses anymore. Because of last year's surplus, they, which was two point four million dollars. They decreased our payment for two hundred and forty-two.
Two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
This month, so for this year. And that means that those funds which have been appropriated by the town. Are going to be available to pay next year's without having to go into the appropriation in the. Edition, let's see, there's another piece of it.
The other piece is our census share has.
It's huge, that's huge, we're going to go down no matter what. Our contribution is going to go down. However, if ten more students come back into the system. And of course, we have sixty extra.
The last two years, the last two years, the community school has increased by sixty students. So those kids will funnel into Amity and, and then that will increase again. It's one of those ebb and flow.
Sixteen percent or something, we normally like twenty or more.
Well.
In the past, it's gonna hit, that's gonna hurt the year.
Definitely. Yeah, Orange is starting to send more students into the system and. You know, if they send in more than we do. That'd be good, yeah. We won't have a final number.
Let's leave private school.
Anyway, do you, anything I can? Tell you? We're pretty proud of the process.
I think the process was very.
Amazing system going, if people want to make, want to recommend changes. We can go right, drill right down to, I don't want to buy this kind of paper for the copier. Because that's the way the detail is put together for the budget.
And we try to be very responsible when we do buy those supplies.
Yeah, but it's, you know, we're not gonna take, we'll just cut ten thousand dollars off. Where would you like it to come from specifically? Remember, we used to have the meetings where people would fight over a hundred dollars?
Ally would be.
Yes, yes, she would, but other, other people would too, because that was a lot more money than. Then it is not, okay, anyhow. Pencil, no, don't just, don't pencil in. April fourth.
And then notice, her town code notices will be mailed out to all households.
Just so you know, and of course, the whole thing will be available to review, so ahead of time.
So you're gonna be done with the hearing at least a little bit earlier than normal?
What was April fourth last year? But it was a Tuesday, because of leap year bounces to a third.
Oh, we used to do it like third week.
It used to be done later April.
That doesn't leave you a heck of a lot of time to get the budget out, if you have changes. And have to reprint everything, that's, I think that's the really.
But that tells you what shape we're in, that we are able to get it all put together for an April fourth.
So also we'll have, hopefully. If we, things that we don't have completely finalized by April fourth. Will be in, in time or whatever we send out, so.
Cause remember, the Amity referendum comes before.
Yeah.
The April becomes, you know, so that.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever the Board of Ed approves is what we'll have to work with, so, but anyway, we will not have to. Appropriate the full nine million dollars that would be our share. Anything else, thank you for, for letting me.
No, that's good to have that update, that's, that's helpful.
Well, the thing is that that hearing is gonna happen before your next meeting, though it's the same, it's the same. Yeah, but you wouldn't wanna have a meeting and go, hey, guess what?
Yeah, so, we're good.
I have, I don't know if this is a question for Ben, I, and I am kicking myself, I meant to say this at the beginning of the meeting. The, the, the notice of, and the agenda of this meeting wasn't on the town website and until just a few minutes.
It was, it was duly noted last week with the town clerk's office, I checked with Will, he was surprised when I told him it wasn't up. So he was surprised that it wasn't there, so I don't know if there was a glitch, but Jen, I got ahold of Jen and then she put it up.
This is a regular meeting, correct? So this is on the list that was filed back in December?
I'm sorry, say again, Ben?
This, this is, this is a regularly, a regular meeting, it's not a special meeting. So this should be on the list that was filed with the town clerk in December that you ordered on?
I think, I think what, what Gina is referring to is that the link for the meeting was not up on the website, because. Usually the agenda gets posted with the link.
Right, no, I understand that, but does not, that's, at this point, not, it would be gratuitous, meaning that it's not a statutory requirement. The, the requirement of filing the notices each year sets the regular scheduled meeting. So that's been done, so there's no, this is not a public hearing or anything that would require additional notice, other than the agenda.
Well then, if I can just request, I, I, I think it sounds like it was an oversight, but I'd just like to request that it could be posted. Earlier.
It doesn't have, I, I, I don't disagree with you, I don't mean, I didn't mean to argue the point, I just, as a matter of legality, it didn't affect it.
Oh, thank you, that, that's helpful.
The day you got, the day you got the packet last Thursday is the day that I sent the agenda to him, so it should have gone up that day. So it would have been on the website for almost a week, so some, some, some glitch or something happened that it wasn't up. So it wasn't. Usual, the minute I send it to you, whoops, okay. Somebody moved. Oh, there we go, okay, maybe we'll start doing the cha-cha here. That's the first time that's happened. But yes, when I send out the packet to the board, I send the agenda itself. To, to Jen and to Will to be posted and Will is usually the one who's responsible for getting it up on the website. But fortunately, because I sent it to Jen, she was able to, Will wasn't home, but when she got home, she was able to throw it, that's why I said I'm working on it, I was trying to see who. Could get it up there first.
This is just a glitch for this time.
Yeah, no, it's, it's usually up there when I do the packet to you, that is when the agenda gets supposed, gets, I sound like a. Gets posted to the website.
Okay.
Okay, so it's up, it's up in plenty of time, this just happened to be a glitch tonight, so I'll, I'll follow up.
That's really helped.
Oh yeah, no, it's usually there, when the, when you get the packet, it goes up the same day, so. That should not be an issue again, so.
Perfect.
All good? Okay, who would like to make the motion to adjourn?
It's your turn. Definitely second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. I'm just going to welcome, EJ welcomes, but we actually just adjourned. So I'm sorry that you missed the meeting. There somewhere, I see a ceiling or a wall, I'm not sure. But.
Looks like he isn't even up on.
I say, I don't know if it's a ceiling or a wall, but yes, we are adjourned, so thank you, everyone.